All right. Good evening.
Welcome. I'll dive right in with resolution number one seventy-two dash twenty twenty-two. This is a resolution authorized for CMFO and municipal clerk to file with twenty twenty-two best practice inventory. About this, the last meeting and. Any questions or comments from the governing bodies? Just ask a question.
Make one quick comment.
Sure.
Appreciate all the work within this and we'll get a high score, so our funding should be cut. There was, I think there's one no answer related to the fire commission and having certain resolutions. I wonder if you give, if there's any color around that or whether we should be responding to that. I know this changes over time, but they seem to be pointing that we should have a resolution in place for. Okay, for the fire commission.
Right, um, so this is something that, you know, as in the past, whenever things like this come up, we have worked to try and address it and I'm pretty sure Mary know it will work with the fire commission so that we know whether they're getting paid. At this point, we don't know. Um, it's really, the, one of the questions was about salary for fire commission, that's one you asked. And I honestly don't know, but we achieved a score of thirty-four, I think we needed twenty-two. So we'll get full state aid in twenty twenty-three. Um, but it certainly is something that I think that we should put on our step rule to work with so that if it comes up next year, it's a yes.
That was my suggestion.
The only other question I have, and thank you, Councilman, for asking that question because it did, it did jump out at me as well. Um, is, is this something that as time goes on, this, the minimums, you know, the eligible score keeps gradually getting incrementally raised over time?
They change it every year.
Okay.
So sometimes like this year was a thirty-four, but there have been times where we've had, you know, up in the hundreds. So if you look at it this year, there were a lot of questions circling around personnel issues and around health benefits and they were at no score.
Right.
But who knows next year?
Right, that's what I mean, they're kind of, they're kind of like pre-serving to see where people are and see, and see if they need to include those. And then, you know, if the minimum, the threshold was twenty-two, it might go up to twenty-eight or.
It could be where, or they could totally change it again and we could be looking at a hundred. So, um, what I think we, that we need to do is take a look at it, try and focus on the ones that we know we can control, but there'll be things in that best practice inventory that will never apply to us because of our size.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I mean, we, we tried to do that, but it's really a guessing game because you don't know what their focus will be next year.
Other questions or comments?
I think you call for a motion, I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Please note that resolution one eighty-two twenty twenty-two is removed from the agenda. Uh, this grant is for the historical society and is required to cash in from the governing bodies.
Twenty-three.
What's that?
Twenty-three.
One eighty-two. The agenda is, okay. Uh, resolution number one eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two. This is authorizing a grant agreement between the city of Lambertville and the state of New Jersey by, for the Department of Environmental Protection for the Department of Environmental Protection Grant Identifier. Um, this is the same grant we authorized at the October twenty session, but the DEP requires some different language. I don't know if you need to highlight and remember what the different language was.
It was all totally different because last time they, they told us they needed a resolution. I asked for a direct, you know, give me a sample because often they will. Um, they said there wasn't one available, so we went forward with our resolution and then they came back and said, oh no, it doesn't have any of the language that we want, this is what we want. So, um, we have to redo the resolution.
Thank you. Questions about this?
This is a tree inventory.
Yeah, yeah. You have a motion, please?
To move?
Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance is on second reading, this is ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two. This is, this is the ordinance of the city of.
Oh yeah, there.
Oops.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, thank you. Resolution one eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two, this is authorized with the city of Lambertville to accept the sub-grant award for the federal fiscal year twenty twenty-two for the emergency management performance grant and emergency management agency assistance. This is the, the OEM grant. Any questions about it? Have a motion, please? Second, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. Now we're on to the second reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two. Ordinance of the city of Lambertville granting permission to Jersey Central Power and Light Company to place certain overhead facilities on existing utility poles owned and or occupied with existing permission by Jersey Central Power Light Company located within the city of Lambertville right away on Berry Street. We talked a little bit about this last month, this is required. Uh, this was oversight by one of the boards and it's required for new properties on Berry Street to, to, to connect to the electric. So, um, I would like to open this up to the public at this time. Is there, are there any members in public who wish to speak to this ordinance? Okay, if you could please set to the microphone. Share, share your name and your street address. You have three minutes of uninterrupted time for questions or comments and.
Sure, yeah, Audrey Burns, Berry Street, Berry Street. Um, I just learned about this the other day, so I didn't even know about the first reading, but, um, I don't know if something like that, does that need to be noticed, sent out to the residents or?
I don't believe this did.
No, but this, I don't think anybody on our street was aware. It appeared in the paper last Monday of, of tonight's, um, public hearing.
And we just note that we wouldn't have had public comment on it last month. I mean, we would have had public comment, but not specifically on this ordinance, so this is the evening we'll do public comment.
Yeah, okay. Um, so I understand, right, the power needs to be supplied to the new townhomes and, um, it, just so we can have notice of when they're going to do the work because it's gonna affect the people working from home and so, you know, that will be fair. And I guess, do we know what it's gonna look like? Uh, like, I thought I saw something about like eighteen, eighteen wires or? I mean, it just sounds like there's gonna be a lot of wires on our street now.
So the new lines that'll be attached to existing poles in the public right of way. Um, I don't see anything that says anything about the number.
It says approximately thirty-seven feet of lines, but no less than eighteen and a half feet, maybe that's what we saw.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And that number of just length of.
Yeah, okay, I mean, just, yeah, just so we have notice when the word is done.
Absolutely, yeah, so I, I will have, I'm happy to check in with Mr. Salvatore and make sure that I get noticed. Um, and that I can contact all of you. I think I got everybody key.
Yeah.
Addresses for, for down there, so I'll be sure to follow up.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine, yeah.
All right, thank you, Audrey. Uh, is there anybody else in the room? Two?
We don't have any hands, Bruce.
Okay. Do you have a motion to propose public commentary on this ordinance, please?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, motion carries. Are there any questions or comments from the, uh, council on this? So, all right. So I would ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two on second reading, granting final approval.
Promotion.
Second, please?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, motion carries. Um, we'll just highlight again, ordinance is in draft. I know that Ken is working on the flood damage preventive, we're having conversations about that based on the new rules, we're hoping to get something out to the council for consideration fairly soon. The rental housing, uh, rental housing units, we're still working on that, are we waiting on something?
Ken.
Waiting on, Ken, thank you. Um, and I heard from Councilman Sanders that the ordinance to amend the city code for provisions for fill-in media is working its way back to us, hopefully.
It's submitted for informal comment with the state film cushion.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman, for that, for your work on that.
Yep.
And Councilman, uh, Segman is also working on ordinance to amend the Lambertville City Code zoning ordinance. This is, oh no, I'm sorry, that's not you, that's me. Uh, I'm working on ordinance to amend the Lambertville City zoning ordinance, this is the application piece in the escrow deposit. Have that done by the, soon. By the end of the year, I'm hoping that.
It's got a twenty-two minute.
Yeah, yes, that's right, so, uh, work on that. Appointment supports and commissions, we have one appointment I'd like to make this evening on the council's consent. It's for Kathleen Jones Harris to serve in the library, Lambertville Public Library Board for a term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. Send everybody her resume and her statement, she was a stellar candidate for the library board in my view. I'm wondering if there are any questions about the, about this potential appointment from the council.
What resume, yeah, is, is anybody built for the library commission, that's right.
Yeah. Look at, um, may I have a motion, please, to confirm the nomination?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor of the appointment of Kathleen Jones Harris to the Lambertville Public Library Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much, Kathleen. Uh, we have a few items for discussion this evening. Um, a couple of these are gonna be really more of announcements, but certainly if the council has any questions, I'm happy to, to jump into a discussion on, on these. Just a reminder that the RFEI for the Flossing Property for the Farm Market is due November fourth, which is a Friday this year, I believe.
It's Friday.
This Friday, by four P M. So, get those RFEIs in, folks.
Is there a, a number of how many can you, that you could share or?
Uh, we have one so far.
Yeah.
There's one. I know that we're gonna have a second one, but I don't have you on that. I didn't, I didn't show the market to an interested candidate or an interested party. I think it should party, so, uh, I know we'll have at least two. So. Uh, the next item is Flossing Property RFP for a planner. So Council President Taylor and I have discussed this recently. Uh, this council has just done amazing work, I think, in the past with its process on the Flossing Property, the acquisition of and making sure that there was enough money set aside so that the council, uh, working with the public could really determine, uh, what the best use of the property is by, by working on visioning, public participation, and creating a site plan. So, uh, you know, I'm, I'm mindful of where we are, uh, kind of in, in the life of the city at the moment. I'm really just about ready to pivot away from a lot of the height of work where we're really, you know, that's going well. I'll talk about that in a few minutes, but I see no reason why we shouldn't take this up now as this council has already done so much work on it, I, I very much value, um, Council President Taylor and Councilman Sanders' work in the past and I want to make sure that, that, uh, we're in a little bit of fun here with the RFP. So, so he was kind enough to draft an RFP and Council President Taylor's gonna take a, a look at it.
I didn't finish it yet, I'm sorry, I'll finish that tonight when I get home.
Yeah, so, um, it's really a plan to, uh, see.
Is, is it a challenge to find a planner that specializes in this?
I don't think so, I think we'll, I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, so it's a project planner for the Flossing Property. So, uh, I'll just read this because I think it's important and, uh, this is kind of the, the outline. So the project planner for the Flossing Property shall be a New Jersey station, a New Jersey licensed professional planner, uh, have experience, let me, uh, see, um, with reports, presentations on land use, housing, open space, economic development, transportation, public utilities, historic preservation, farmland preservation, and natural resource protection and conservation. The project planner for the Flossing Pro, Pro, Project will be responsible for meeting the members of the governing body and the public through the process to assist better defining the use of the structures located on the Flossing Property, which includes but may not be limited to the farm market, the law cabin, historical home house, the four barns, and the open space.
No, but, um, that's just been written to the record, I should say for the record that it's not final language, we have a.
Okay, yes, this is not final language, thank you for, uh, for making that, but I just wanted to provide a general overview of what, uh, is the proposed, uh, RFP, so we will make sure that.
One, two different.
It's okay if it is because it's just a discussion and there's no vote on.
Right. Are there any questions about the RFP and where we are in this process?
What, what revision, the bids will come in?
Yeah, yeah.
What's the?
What's the timeline? Basically, what's the proposal on it?
I think we're looking at. I think we're looking at December second for a turnaround or to receive the bids.
And, okay, so we're not, we're not, are we putting out how much we expect to pay or just?
No, 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 no. And there are a number of criteria by which we will evaluate perspective on companies, so, so not just about the months, right?
Okay, so. The bids will come back in sometime in December, we'll be, right, the submissions.
Yeah.
We'll make a decision before the end of the year.
Hmm.
And then. We start a project to execute this. This plan.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have, I mean, it, it's for the period of next year, so I mean, it'll be a, it'll be a, a leisurely, I'm sure, process, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I, I would just, I would really love that this council's input on, uh, on the RFP and just gets going.
Okay.
And then the, the new council.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of the timing. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have a, I don't have a clearly defined sense of the time next year. Um, I don't see why, uh, you know, hopefully we can do this in tandem with some of the other work that we do, budget. I, I, you know, we don't have, we have less on our plate next year.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I was just getting a sense of like by quarter, you know, like, you know, what do you expect down by the first quarter?
In the proposal too, and conversations with the consultants, it's hard to say that now until we have. Responses, so to see what the different scopes are gonna be that we get from the consultants.
So we're gonna give them a. We're gonna give them some kind of.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, that's what our people, but they're gonna all respond to that differently and come with their own approach and their timeline and their expertise.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, if everyone's comfortable, we'll have Council President Taylor take a look at that and then release the December second date, uh, return date. Happy to send it to the council for review so you have an idea of what, uh, what we're looking at. Um, again, this is probably more of an announcement than anything else, I just want to let everybody in the public know that, uh, the council will be making a site visit to all our, all of our municipal properties on Saturday, November twelfth, not November tenth, this is a Thursday. Great dates, aren't I?
Oh, is this a Thursday now? That's a Saturday.
Yeah. Make sure this is on the record correctly. Make sure the mayor's of November twelfth.
I think the first of the month should always be on a Monday. Just change all the ca, calendars so that it's first of on the same day.
You get to work on that.
We'll take that up on the first of, the first of next month, whatever that is. Um, so yes, so we will be touring the facilities, uh, taking a look at, who carry copies of the facilities reports, it's really just a fact finding mission. Um, I've invited the, uh, the two presumptive, uh, new council members, uh, the election will pass by then, uh, we should have an expectation that they will probably, since they're running opposed, uh, win the election and, uh, they will join us so that we can begin having discussions on the municipal properties and planning for next year. Any questions about that? I'd like to thank the council for making the Saturday morning available to the public and myself.
And we will be wearing comfortable shoes.
Comfortable shoes, yes, we'll be mucking about the DPW yard, climbing the third floor, the annex and city hall and so forth. All right, moving on, the DNR Canal Project, I've, I've contacted, um, the, the project. Project people and told them that I would like to table this until the spring, I feel it as though we're not ready to make a decision, uh, at the council level on, um, on a project of this nature based, uh, you know, on the Flossing Property, which is where they, which is where they want it, which really has kind of, who's been on the site plan, I think this is a reasonable thing. Um, next on the list is Vali.
We're gonna have the barge before the horse.
Did you skip over the?
Barge before the horse, get that in the minutes.
All right.
I try.
That's a job, that's, you're funny in a statement.
Yeah.
What?
Food waste, the third can, what, you skipped over that one?
Oh, did I? Yes. Um, food waste, third can, RFP, so, um, working with the Environmental Commission and both the previous deputy, what, no, actually it was just Lindsay who did the surveys? Just Lindsay, not just Lindsay, but Lindsay who generated surveys for, um, uh, people who are interested in compost. Uh, we, we've been able to draft and release an RFP for food waste, uh, in the city. We've kind of come back around to this, we've spent a lot of time this year trying to figure out a way that we could encourage people to compost, I have, I had a lot of these conversations with people. Um, and so we, so we've released an RFP, um, and it's gonna have a number of different options. Uh, it's gonna, this is, this is not something that the city is gonna be paying for next year. So, you know, our goal is to get our residents back interested in composting at the lowest possible cost and the, and the greatest convenience to that, basically. So we provided four options in the, in the, um, in the RFP, one would be a bu, a bucket drop off door to door, which is, you know, you put your bucket outside in front of your house, somebody picks up and drops off a clean bucket every week. A lot of residents already have this, I have it, for example. Um, there's another option for a bucket drop off at a location, so maybe you take a bucket to someplace in, in town, uh, which may be, which may cost lots, right? You drop off a bucket at the school and he just comes, you know, whoever it is just comes once a week and picks up a whole bunch there. There may also be a possibility of a, of a, uh, the company providing a dumpster or a set, or some type receptacle where you would bring things and dump them in. Um, there may be, uh, we're also looking at some proposals for restaurant pickups. As you probably all know, we do have it in our ordinance that restaurants require compost, but we have not been able to kind of partner with them and so we have not been very strict about enforcement. On that one, uh, and we also threw in one for lawn waste. Um, so, uh, you know, some composting companies, small scale typically, uh, like actually to have leaves because it provides the carbon matter to offset all of the, uh, the high nitrogen items that come typically in your food, in your food waste. So, uh, this is what we're doing, I'm actually sitting on a panel at the, uh, the New Jersey League of Municipalities with Gary Sonmeyer, talking about, uh, food waste and, uh, so, uh, we just had a meeting today, a number of other communities and municipalities, the state are really trying to get programs up and running. Um, it's difficult due to DDP regulations and the fact that there's only three sites in the state that will actually take, um, food waste. So, uh, so that's where we are in that, does anybody have any questions?
There was a drop off in, and I did, I mean, we thought about where, would that be a DPW or a council?
Uh, we haven't really chosen, I mean, we're, I'd be open to, to, to that. Um, the DPW yard is, uh, needs to be, I mean, you'll see when you go, um, brush, we need to get rid of all the brush. I mean, it's years and years and we didn't do it this year, so there's no way to actually drive in and drive out of the DPW yard like there used to be, there was an entrance for residents and then an exit for residents. We've, uh, we've lost our ability to do that just because of the sheer amount of brushing these we've taken in the last few years without kind of dealing with. So, you know, that's a possibility, I do want to get that cleaned up in the spring. You know, it's.
Kate's gotta be repaired.
Yeah, the fence has to be repaired. Yeah, we'll see, uh, we'll see that. It could be something like, um, driving in a, a truck, uh, to, uh, you know, the school parking lot on a Saturday morning from nine to noon, but when they're compost up in the truck and away he goes, right? I don't envision a moment where we'll have, um, you know, the possibility of, of, of some kind of receptacle or dumpster in a place for more than a morning, right? We don't want to encourage vermin, you know, we need to have a closed, uh, need to do this addition, get it out of town quickly, so. Uh, yeah, I don't have a, I don't have an ideal location for that yet, uh, but we're, I think we should be open to it.
If we need to partner with, uh. Uh, Illinois.
Or down there. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Cause it already smells nice.
Yeah.
Sorry. Start that for the record.
It was just a discussion.
We're already saying, that smell.
So, I guess the, one question, the goal is to make the, the folks who are gonna be involved in this will pay a fee.
Yes, they will pay a fee.
So it won't come out of the general fund.
It's, yeah. Ideally, in the long term, I just don't think the city personally is in a position to, uh, take up this as a, as a project for, for the city. Uh, we already know, years past, there's difficulty in terms of staffing in municipal, I mean, I mean, there's a whole host of reasons why it's really super impactful for the city to undertake this at the moment. Ideally, I would love to get it to a, the best, back to a place where we've got a company that we're working with for a couple of years that we really like and we're in a better place financially where maybe we partner with residents or maybe we take it on. You know, I, I think in terms of the, the long term, the, there is a cost benefit analysis here, we get people to stop throwing their food to the trash, right? The, the, it's heavy, the trash, and it's food in the trash. So, you know, I'd love to be able to get to a place in two or five years where, where we really have, uh, a high level of support for it and where, uh, we're, we're able to take it on at a municipal level.
As, uh, as long as we're doing an RFP for waste, uh, for compost pickup, has there been any discussion to do an RFP for trash?
Yeah. This has. Yeah, no, there, there hasn't.
Because of the county transfer station for the trash, so we're really using whoever they, you know, they go out to bid for, which is currently waste management, and then we just go through with it, the transfer station and they go us directly. Um, and for the food waste, none of that money's coming through the city, they will contract directly with whoever we award the bid to. So we're just being a steward by saying they've met all of the criteria required by DEP, this is below bid and if you want to partner, then they would go directly to whomever the bid is awarded to.
Yeah.
But individuals could go with.
Whoever.
Their current.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, but, you know, we're hoping that with a little bit of competition, we may get it down from, you know, two, two or three companies that are charging eight dollars to somebody who's charging six dollars. It, it, it's really a little bit of competition going here. I would just note that this continues to be difficult for municipalities, I was on the call today, um, setting up the, this, uh, this, uh, this form that we're gonna be in and, uh, somebody from the green team in Westfield noted they have thirty thousand residents and they only generate like, you know, ten yards of compost a week, right? They got this program running for a while, it's, it's very difficult, um, I think, just because of, because they're all, there are only three sites in, in the state and, you know, just not, the, the, the infrastructure's just not there.
Where's the closest one to you or?
Trenton.
To Trenton.
There is one in Trenton, yeah. Uh, but I do think that there are a lot of smaller municipalities, especially in rural areas, I mean, there's, there's keen interest in this RFP. There's at least two very strong candidates, I think, who wanna, who wanna come in for this. Uh, there, there've been, I've had a lot of conversations and people are super interested in doing composting here. So, I'm hoping that we can get, uh, get a good arrangement going with somebody that may, you know, deepen our commitment to working with our restaurants and our residents and all of that. Um, so, stay tuned, it's a, it's a, it's a priority for me, I think, it's a, it's a good thing we're doing. All right, uh, valley parking, so we've talked a little bit about this over the last couple of meetings. Um, set up just a little bit more information, um, and I'll just review a couple of the salient points here for the public. Uh, Under the Moon, which is a restaurant on North Union Street, uh, would like to propose a valley parking, uh, on North Union Street. Um, they would read, pay for two metered spaces during the time allotted for valley services. Uh, there's spaces that are directly in front of the restaurants, uh, would be Fridays from five to ten, Saturdays from ten A M to ten P M, Sunday from eleven A M and five to P M. The valley charges twenty dollars, the, the restaurant gets not, the restaurant is not involved in getting any revenue from this whatsoever. They just think it's a good idea, they've had a lot of complaints from customers over the last few months about parking and how hard it is for the older patrons to park in central businesses, and they just see it as such an important, um, potential service to people coming into town, that they're willing to pay for the meters, they're willing to pay for signs, they're willing to have the valley stand on their property um, and, uh, that they're like to be really kind of the leaders, I suppose, if you will, of such a program. And, uh, you know, it seems like we've got a lot of flexibility, so I talked to, uh, Under the Moon, that they, uh, seem really eager to do this and willing to work with the city council, whatever, uh, whatever parameters it might like to establish. So, that's kind of, kind of where we left off, so, I don't know if there were, I, I tried to answer, uh, Councilman, uh, I've never sent some questions, I think I, I think I answered them all, um, in one form or another, uh, on the, uh, my most, my most recent memo. So, I don't know where people are with this, if they're, you know, the, the only other thing I would just note is I talked to, uh, the city attorney, Bill local, uh, who said that if we wanted to do a trial period, say three months, uh, ordinance would not be required, we could do a resolution that would have very specific language about what the agreement was, and after that. And after that period, the resolution would expire. And then if we wanted to continue with the program, then we would do it by ordinance. So, uh, we do have some flexibility if we decide that we want it potentially forward with, uh, giving it a try. So without moving this up to the council for, uh, thoughts. Or are there any other questions that haven't been answered?
Well, they said they were gonna do, there was going to be training. That was in one of the documents. I think it was one of the early documents. Did they, did they give any more?
No, the company that they would be using is, uh, Status Valet. They used to work at Marsha Browns, which, as you know, is a very high traffic area right there. And they're currently, uh, working with, uh, out of debts. So, um, they do have some kind of regional knowledge. Uh, I don't know what their actual training is for valets. I, I don't, I don't.
Right, right, cause you know, oftentimes what they say they're going to do and then what actually gets done on a day to day, there's sometimes a gap. So, um, do we have to be concerned about another, uh, business seeking to implement this type of service? Or, or participating, uh, you know, offering this service? I, I guess, um, it seems to me if you're gonna do it, if you're gonna offer it for the entire central business district, would it, would there be a more, um, would there be a better location that isn't so congested traffic wise for pickup and drop off? That's one thing that I thought of.
You know, to that, I would just say, I'd be happy to entertain another location. I think Bridge Street could be problematic since it's a state road. I, I don't know if we would be required to get state permission to do a valet there. It's under their jurisdiction. So I, I, I mean, if, for example, you were proposing Bridge Street, I'd have to follow up with you. I don't know, maybe it has any thoughts about whether that, um, potentially an issue. But, you know, there's nobody else proposing this. So, so that's something I could say to that at the moment.
Okay.
Interesting.
So what, what are the, what are the benefits for the, for the, I, I guess, what are the benefits aside from, you know, customers being dropped off in front of a restaurant that they wish to go to? And I guess we have, uh, older and handicapped visitors, easier access. They're still gonna have to walk if they wanna go around, but no, that's, that's another thing. But, um, do we anticipate any benefits to the community or the neighbors or, you know, the residents in, in general? Just I'm wondering.
I, I mean, I can imagine a, a number of benefits. You know, I do think it's, I do think if you know that you have valet parking and you're a senior citizen or somebody who's disabled, even if you're going to a restaurant across the street or around the corner to the Lambert Field Station, you know, you know, you kind of know what the distance is, right? So you now have, uh, a known factor as opposed to, well, you know, maybe I'll drop you off at the restaurant while I go look for parking. And, you know, it could be, you know, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how long it takes people to park, uh, but, but, you know, the, the ability for, for two people or four people to get out of the car and not worry about it is actually, I think, a great benefit for people in Central Business District. I just think it's convenient, uh, so.
And they don't have many people use it and also effectively increases parking capacity downtown.
Right.
So with more people.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got cars going to the station, I'm personally not worried about meters. Meters seem to always get filled in the evenings. You know, whenever I walk the dog in the evening, it's the meter. I don't feel like we're ever losing out on meters and I don't, my, 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 my idea here is that we wouldn't lose out on, on meter revenue, uh, based on this.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing I can think of is, is Sunday from eleven to eleven AM is the Presbyterian Church, I know.
Um, well, you know, that, that, I mean, yeah, the, the question was something that we, uh, we looked at. Eric said, you know, Eric from Under the Moon said, well, you know, I'm not sure this would actually happen, but, you know, the parishioners could use it, uh, for example, uh, you know, if you have elderly parishioners who are going to service, I don't know what time the services are there. Does anybody know?
No.
Are they before eleven?
Yeah, because they start with Sunday school and then I think their church services start at eleven.
Starting at eleven, okay. Well, that's, that coincides with the time of valet parking would start. And, um, I, I don't necessarily see that as an issue. As I said in the last meeting, they're, they're talking about the two spaces right in front of Under the Moon. The space immediately behind that or to the north of that is a handicap space. And then the church has a, a solid sixty feet of yellow line there. So there's a, there's a, I feel very comfortable saying that, that, uh, that unless it were an extraordinary event, that there would be a backup for the church, uh, people were being dropped off at the church.
I think that line is, if my memory serves me correctly, the, the reason there's no parking in front of the church is because the fire apparatus need a radius to be able to turn and devotion. So I would check with, if we're gonna tell, if we're gonna promote this and say, and to the church, well, you can, you can use the, the unused space in front of the church.
They can park there.
No, no, just drop off there. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about adding parking. Like, I guess the, the, the idea potentially is, you, you know, if you had, you have three valets and you had four or five cars, you know, would that potentially, you know, would there be enough of a backup to affect anybody that's dropping off somebody at the church? I, I have to say the answer seems mathematically no to me.
We won't know until we try.
Right, yeah.
The other, do you?
I was gonna ask if they have a, like, what, do we have an idea of the timing and when this pilot would be executed?
That was the one question I forgot to ask Eric. You know, it might, uh, I would imagine they'd be happy to try at any time. I mean, it seems like the, you know, I could ask him. It seems like maybe, you know, December into January and February. I mean, December's kind of busy. I would think that people come into town for dinners. That would really give you a, I think, a good, a good sense of what it was like. And, uh, and then obviously January, February would be slower periods of time when I, I would make any problem whatsoever.
And, and, and my last question, which we didn't submit to you, cause I just thought of it this afternoon, is how do we measure the success or the deficiencies? I'm not gonna say failure, cause I don't wanna go, I don't wanna make it like that. But, you know, how do we measure the success of this, this pilot, um, which we've done by resolution? How do we know if it was a good thing or not?
I think that's a great question, uh, uh, and I'm happy to hear what everybody else has to say. I, I would imagine that we could certainly get the valet company to provide us with numbers in terms of cars they park. They must keep track. Uh, we could ask for numbers of cars parked for the trial period every day. They have to just keep track.
I'd also ask for a time of day, cause it may be that starting at eleven AM, it's not necessary.
Right.
You can start later.
Yeah. Um, and, and then, you know, in terms of, you know, convenience, it's hard to know, right? I mean, if you can talk to the restaurant owners, you can talk to a couple of the restaurant owners who aren't under the moon and say, you know, you feel like this has been something that your customers have taken advantage of. I'm happy to kind of go out there in the community and talk to the store owners and, you know, I'm happy to do that once a month or.
And we, we do hear from the store owners when there are issues with parking, that they're, that they're customers are complaining. So it would not be a stretch to say, are you hearing good things?
Right, yeah.
Or are they making any difference at all?
And, and I think it's also reasonable to check in with the police department. Uh, obviously we have, we have, uh, police officers down in Central Business District from time to time. I would be more than happy to see if we could, you know, keep a, a little bit of an eye on that. I mean, to tell you, if we do know that it's a, a heavily trafficked area, um, age.
I mean, we do have the businesses listed, so we could send out a sort of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We have that list, sir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's one, that we, that we had used in the past. But actually, I mean, Emily, that would be kind of. Um, couple of questions. How many, how many residents have stickers that will lose those two spots to use hours when they leave and come back?
About a hundred and eighty stickers.
In for the CBD? Or is it just Union Street?
Well, no, I mean, that's in total. So that's for every meter, we have, uh, roughly three hundred and forty meter spaces. And we have a hundred and eighty-two, I wanna say, um, parking stickers issued. And so it's just where it was the meter, they can use.
That's a total amount of parking stickers we have.
I'm sorry?
That's a total amount of parking stickers for the whole city.
Yeah.
Yeah, how many are from Bridge to Corial?
Do the stickers still wouldn't be needed to the street here?
Not really. We've really given a lot of flexibility to that because we found, um, under the old rule, you could only park on the block that you resided. So we've relaxed and, and the ordinance actually was written to relax.
Yeah, yeah, I remember.
So, um, and, and we're hearing a lot of positive feedback from people because they look, if they lived on Church Street, they'd come home late at night and no parking. Now they still have parking, so.
Yeah.
They're paying more, but they're having, you know, they have more flexibility.
Has there been discussion about the route they will be coming to directing cars to pick up and bringing them back?
Uh, I didn't talk, I forgot to talk to Eric about that. I'm confident, uh.
We have that information last time.
Well, we, we talked about it, but I didn't talk to Eric about it, so.
We were guessing or that was?
No, it was something, I think it was something that Councilman Sanders brought up as a potential route. Yeah, we, we haven't, I haven't cemented that as part of any agreement. If there's a concern with a, a particular route, uh, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
I'm happy to, uh, I'm happy to make that a condition of the resolution. Absolutely. I think that, so the two, the two routes, I, I believe that Councilman Sanders had would be if you're going down to the station, you go down, you turn right, you turn left into the station parking lot, coming back, you turn right onto Bridge Street. Then you go up to, um, the alley, it's not George Street, it's, um, George's Alley, thank you. I turned left, George's Alley, and then you turn left on Church and then, uh, and then left on, uh, like, and then.
So how do they get to where they drop off the people?
Well, yeah, that's gonna be a little bit of a he has.
No, I mean, I mean, how, how, you went really quick through. I'm sorry, no, we, we spoke about George Street too. And then the question was, well, where, how does the public in the car get to be in front of the restaurant?
Yeah, that part's a little bit of a spaghetti.
Are they gonna come down Lambert Lane and make a right on Corial and then make a right on, no, to go?
To take advantage.
To drop their car.
They're gonna come however they're gonna come.
Right.
They're gonna come from however they're gonna come, like they're, they're coming from who knows where.
That's right.
That's right.
The only spot to pull up in is gonna be the southbound of, of, of Union Street. You, you, they wouldn't be able to pull off on. That could be a problem.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
If people try to drop someone going north.
Yeah, yeah, people see it and they just pull, lose their car there and they go, oh, take my car.
Yeah, it wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
That'd be very.
Well, my, my concern, my concern is, is, um, people who live on Lambert Lane and Corial Street have been very vocal about activity that is going on, will be going on down there with the, you know, if it comes through. And, and for the, uh, Old Brewer being a marijuana dispensary, and I really have second thoughts about throwing something in our block, yeah.
Well, we're not, we've already, we're ha- we're happy to go the other route, but you can't tell people how to drive into town, right? I mean, that.
Right.
I, I mean, right, I mean, cause, cause people could be coming to Under the Moon from Stockton. Or they could be coming from, uh, Under the Moon from, uh, you know, New Hope, in which case they might, you know, take a left on, you know, twenty-nine and then take a left on George and, and people know how to approach the, the restaurant in that sense.
Yeah, no, I, I think the, the, the drop off is great that way. So I mean, they wanna use it to come back in a ride out of the station and left on George and left on Church and then the left again, yeah.
So my, my own particular thoughts are, are, um, we first mentioned this. I looked and there's a bunch of towns that have ordinances related to, to this. So, um, I think it is probably something that should be regulated formally by the government. I don't have a problem though with a trial period from which we could learn. You know, you know, like it's like our cannabis ordinance, we, we learned a couple of things after we, you know, published it. I promulgated the rules. If there was a trial period, um, and we had a process, and the, the challenge is we're not, ordinance allows for a public comment period. This is where to sort of jump it, we would just be jumping into it. So I, I would encourage folks, maybe like the chicken, uh, chicken, but, uh, but have some sort of like formal process to allow people an opportunity to comment, invite that comment, you know, it's not a formal rulemaking process. So that we get something, but we just, uh, and, um.
Are you saying before we pass the resolution for the pilot or during the process?
If it's only three months, I, I think I'm, you know, we're talking about.
Talk about the winter months.
We're talking about, is it Friday day or something?
Yeah.
So, so for a month, we're talking about, you know, twelve, whatever.
So can I, can I give a comment on something that I said? Is that, what's, the thing that seems to be kicking us is because they, they asked for two parking spaces or else we really wouldn't be involved with this, right? There's a valet that started themselves on the south end of town at, at the hall. And to your point, if they're not taking city streets, we could have another company as Deanna's did and just start with no regulation at all from the city. So the question is, what, you know, what are we gonna eventually license these to?
No, no, I, I think really the way I envision this is if everybody's okay, we'll draft a resolution. We'll consider it at the November seventeenth meeting. I will send something out, the Metroville Matters Hall, invite people to write notes. I can share those with the council or the general tone of, of the notes, whatever. You can take that into consideration. Uh, we can, uh, look at the ordinance, I have the ordinance, the, the, the resolution, we can draft it very specifically. I'm happy to be as specific as you want on this. It's a trial period. This, 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 this must happen. If it doesn't happen, you know, the, we, we immediately stop the program. We assess the, the, the program after three months or, you know, I'm not sure how we do it. And then, and then we create an ordinance if we're pleased with, with the services advised.
My question is, is still open in my mind. If, if, so this, this, the test period's three months. What's to stop another, uh, very, uh, entrepreneurial person from deciding that they are going to do uh, valet service?
On private property?
Nothing, that's why.
No, I, well, why did they have to do it on private?
Well, they have to come to us, right? I mean, look at all the conversation we're having about this now, right?
I think that's got to do with parking spaces. If they didn't need a drop off and a pickup spot, I don't think that.
So the question is, for example, bells where there's not, uh, metered spots? Are you saying?
This is why I've already said we need an ordinance. This is now a thing that municipalities are considering.
Right.
So there's sort of two separate related issues. Do we wanna do this pilot in the CBD and also concurrently are we thinking about an ordinance to regulate this big picture? And to your question, the answer is nothing. If, if somebody isn't asking us for some sort of approval that we need to give, there's nothing currently to stop them.
Well, they want to reserve spaces, so.
Well, they can't reserve spaces, right? So you can take the example of bells, it's all resident parking.
Right, I, I, I have stopped a few that have requested, uh, temporary parking signs
Right.
for valet service. I've stopped that.
Yeah.
Right, but if they have their own, if they're a hog.
Correct, right.
They.
They go into their lot and nothing we can do about it. I mean, not that I would necessarily want to do anything about it. Yeah, if it's on a public street, we, we control the action.
So, so to me, the, the cadence of this should be, um, announced that we're gonna do this, do a three month or whatever long project, learn from that, um, and then help educate ourselves. But I do think we should, you know, there, there's increasing interest around this. There's interest in, in, across the river. Uh, most towns have regulated this and I think that that's probably a good idea. So I would suggest that we do the three month trial, learn from that, um, and go through a rulemaking process if they wanna continue, for example. We, we might need to, because the rulemaking process takes a little while. They might need to renew the private property.
If we end up, if they do plan to start the pilot immediately and this is through the winter, two things come to mind that are opposing. One is, it could actually be better for downtown. We can't get things, so we can't get snow cleared out and people are able to valet, they can go somewhere else. But also the, the feeling, if it is snowy and yucky, it could negatively impact how people perceive the entire pilot depending on the weather. So we just need to be aware of different, uh, natural, natural impacts to the pilot.
What are the, what are the times again?
Uh, so it would be Friday evening from five to ten. Of course, the meters only go till nine, but we could, we could make it go till ten. I'm kidding. Saturday from ten AM to ten PM and Sunday from eleven AM to five PM. Saturday from ten AM to ten PM and Sunday from eleven AM to five PM.
Okay, so. Are we gonna make one of, another? House of Worship angry if now we're gonna be using that alleyway where people walk from the parking lot to go to church?
Well.
And there's also church drop off, yeah, Saturday night.
Yeah, nobody said that they're definitely keeping that alley.
What?
The, the question would be, what, which route do you take? So you do a route that includes Sunday workday.
What, what time's the last mass? Is it one o'clock? Is there a mass in the afternoon?
Eleven, so it's eight, nine, thirty, it's eleven. And five o'clock on Saturday evening.
It starts at, it starts at eleven. You would never have a problem on Sunday. Because you, the first time you never get a car back would be like probably twelve thirty, one o'clock.
May, may, may I ask a question of Lieutenant Brown?
Please.
Is there any possible way to regulate whether they are taking the route we think that they should take?
Any way I would see that is other be, other be ordinance, something that you're gonna prove, right, for as an ordinance? This is the route they have to take, so you have to apply that.
Then how do we know? It's not like it's a.
Right, you might have to monitor that, either whoever you assign to the zoning. Whoever it might be to monitor that, to be able to reflect if they're really doing that or not, right? So that would be the only way to do that. And, and I, we have to see with this pilot program, how many cars are really going? Is that impacting fifteen cars? Even on a high number, obviously fifteen cars an hour, that'd be very high, probably, I mean, we're looking at, it's probably gonna be very, probably expensive, right?
Twenty dollars.
Right, so how many, we have to look to see how many cars we're running down, right? And if this is even gonna impact. The streets that you're, you're talking about.
Which is why we want to do the pilots, we can figure some of this stuff out.
Yeah, I would definitely have to, 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 as the president's question is, the, the point is that we should. Ask for data around the number. It would be next by an hour, I don't.
Yeah, that was actually one of my questions, right? That's how many, what was it, throughput, kind of thing?
But I would ask them as a condition of approval to, to report out.
Well, I think if people are coming for dinner, we kind of know when that's happening. Cause I, I think on a Sunday, they're coming for lunch. Or just to drop their cars off is another thing. And I think we have also the, the edits peak hours. The effect on traffic on Bird Street not. Oh, interfering now that we're gonna be having more, a percentage more vehicles. Making a left, if that's the route they take, making a left onto the, onto the alley. So it's just something to keep an eye out, out for. So. I mean, the other, the other question I have is how long is the? The contract, so to speak, if there is one, with the station that they can use the station?
Late sunset.
Okay, those are the questions.
Because if the station, if it doesn't work for the station and they pull out, then what happens?
Got it.
But it, and that would be the same for any other lot, actually. I'm not just by a station.
I don't think, right, that's not our, we don't, we don't have, you know, we don't have a, an interest in that. If the station. Remakes on their parking arrangement, the valet service, that's between those two parties, but it doesn't come from us.
Well, I don't, I think that just a little bit, because, because they are parking these cars off the street. So the option is if they lose, if, if they lose their right to.
Well, yeah, we would make that, we can make that condition easily, so.
Yeah, you have to, right, they have to tell us where they're parking these cars, right? But, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it seems like we have, I have a couple of things to button up. We'll, we'll get this out in the public. We'll see what happens with some emails. Hopefully, we will present a resolution at the November. Seventeenth meeting.
And the, the other, I might just say one other.
Sure.
Well, if, if we're gonna regulate the way that they're, they bring their cars back. If we're gonna regulate the way they bring cars back, then it's gonna impact somebody somewhere. Who lives in the area. And it may not, it may not. So that's why we're sensitive until Councilman Sanders came up with a way they could bring the cars back that didn't involve Lambert Lane. So we were sensitive to that. So. Just something to keep in mind of all of a sudden, you know, if they can't go down George Street, that's fine, I'm not ready to go. Yeah. And then.
Okay, point, point out it. The two things I learned very early on in my career as mayor is, one, before you decide to do anything, you ask yourself how you're gonna pay for it. And two is where you're gonna park. So always on my mind, parking, parking, parking.
Yeah.
All good questions, all good points. Take them under advisement and. Thank you for that conversation, those points and those questions. Just a couple, a couple of other notes here. I just wanted to give an update on the construction projects. Everything's going very well, I'm very pleased to say. The Quarry Street, the joint West Animal and River project as well underway. The Gabian Baskets are, I think, all the ways to the municipal line now, so they're making really good progress on that project. I was just down there at five o'clock this afternoon. It looks great. Very pleased with it. I would also say that the Kyle Conti guys are doing great work in Swan Creek. They're continuing to work in Upper York, making their way slowly towards one seventy-nine there. Also doing great work. And down by the Hibernia, they've started to construct the wall and that's gonna be going pretty quickly. The Hibernia Foundation Cementless Board today, so that's great. And the DOT feels like they're gonna be working there for a long time. On the bridge. I go down and check on these projects every day and I'm very pleased with how everything's going. Earl will be back in Start of the Roads next week. I've had a conversation with our contact there. They pulled people out of Lambertville to do, to finish other jobs. But he's given us a hard deadline, have everything done by December second. So you can note that for the record, I will be following up. Very closely with them. So things are going well with the construction. Are there any questions about any of the construction?
Looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, dates are good.
Yep. Lastly, if not on the agenda, I just wanted to know that the budget hearings are scheduled for November tenth in this room. They will be zoomed live. Overseeing them. They will also be available to the public. We have a recording later on. So if you're interested, if everybody's interested in being a part of that or listening, that would be great. Please join in. And at this point, like I've been meeting them for public participation. Any members in public who wish to speak? All right.
Well, we had four, but we're down to two.
Oh dear.
Three, three.
No, I guess we aren't entertaining enough.
No, first pitch.
Can I have one thing here?
Sure.
So I've been looking into EV charging stations. I just wanted to thank Kate Millsaps Wolfender, who we met this weekend and. We've been researching and sharing ideas. If anybody has expertise or comments or info you wanna share, please, so let us know. But.
I've got somebody to reach out to.
Okay.
Can't remember his name.
Okay.
Good, thanks for that. May I motion to close the public comment period? Right, at this time I did. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming, public. Wherever you are.